I'll call the order, August 22nd, regular business meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance tonight, if you'd like to sign up for Citizens Committee Period, there's a sheet in the back of the room. Do any members of council have anything they wish to present before we get started?
I just think, take the time to share with folks that we've been meeting the two on twos with a couple council members and school board members. We had that week, that meeting the other week. I thought was quite productive and we've both walked away with some homework assignments. But I'm very excited about the progress that we're making and we should be having an additional meeting potentially with all bodies here in the next month or so. So, say that.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, the first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is our motion to adopt?
Same.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any other discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item 2.1 is to present a proclamation to Ms. Crystal Graham of the Virginia Chapter of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. The proclamation recognizes September the 5th through the 11th as National Suicide Prevention Week and proclaims the observance of National Suicide Prevention Week in Waynesboro. Mr. Hamp.
Office of the City Council, City of Waynesboro, Commonwealth, Virginia, proclamation and recognition of the 2016 National Suicide Prevention Week. Recognizing suicide as a national and statewide public health problem and suicide prevention as a national and statewide responsibility, the City Council designates September 5th through September 11th as National Suicide Prevention Week in Waynesboro, Virginia. This week overlaps World Suicide Prevention Day, September 10th, recognizing internationally, excuse me, recognized internationally and supported by the World Health Organization. Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34. And whereas, in the United States, one person completes suicide every 12.3 minutes, resulting in nearly 43,000 suicides each year. And whereas, suicide is the only leading cause of death in the United States that has increased every year for the past decade. And whereas, it is estimated that there are over 1.1 million suicide attempts each year. And whereas, in 2014, Virginia experienced 1,122 deaths by suicide. Whereas, in Virginia, suicide is the 11th leading cause of death overall. And whereas, over 90% of the people who die by suicide have diagnosable and treatable mental health conditions, although often that conditions or those conditions are not recognized or treated. Whereas, suicide results in an estimated $44.6 billion in combined medical and work loss costs nationally. Whereas, suicide results in an estimated of $1.12 billion in combined lifetime medical and work loss costs in Virginia. Whereas, the stigma associated with mental health conditions and suicidality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help and further traumatizes survivors of suicide loss and people with lived experience of suicide. Whereas, organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention envision a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources. For those who have lost or struggle, an urge that we, one, recognize suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem and declare suicide prevention to be a priority; two, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities; three, encouraging initiatives based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention; four, promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide and that suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed current coping abilities of someone suffering from a mental health condition; and five, develop and implement strategies to increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services. Therefore, be it resolved that Bruce Allen, Mayor of Waynesboro, does hereby designate September 5th through 11th, 2016, as National Suicide Prevention Week in Waynesboro.
Thank you. Ms. Graham, if you'd like to come up and get.
I would. Thanks. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want to thank you on behalf of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and as a survivor myself of suicide loss. My identical twin sister Christina died by suicide when we were only 15 years old. I want to invite each of you to register to walk with us on October 8th at Gypsy Hill Park in Stanton and help to fight suicide and be the voice for reducing the stigma surrounding mental illness. With only seven weeks to go, we have more than 200 walkers registered already and have raised nearly $10,000 with a goal of $50,000 to be raised. Suicide prevention starts with everyday heroes like you and me. Tonight's proclamation brings the subject out of the darkness and helps us take a significant step in the mission to save lives and bring hope to those affected by suicide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
And I do have a flyer for each of you all, just to invite you to the walk.
Awesome. Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you. Item 3A is to receive a presentation by Ms. Nancy Gross- Grosso?
Grosso.
Grosso, I'm sorry. Of the DuPont Corporation Remediation Group regarding the proposal to remediate mercury contamination along the banks of South River in Waynesboro. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as I think you're well aware, the DuPont Company founded a manufacturing, textile manufacturing facility here in Waynesboro in 1929. And between 1929 and 1950, mercury was released to the South River from the former Waynesboro manufacturing facility. Over time, the released mercury has been transported downstream to the South Fork of the Shandor River and parts of the Shandor River, and flooding has deposited mercury on the floodplains associated with these rivers. Mercury is a toxic pollutant and exposure to mercury can have adverse effects on human health and wildlife. In this instance, the most common potential route of human exposure is from eating contaminated fish, although other routes of exposure are possible. The contamination was discovered in the early 1970s and by 1977, the Virginia Department of Health issued a fish consumption ban from Waynesboro to Front Royal for the South River, the South Fork of the Shandor River and portions of the Shandor River. The ban has since been replaced by consumption advisory. In a settlement between DuPont and the State Water Control Board in 1984, DuPont established a trust fund to support a 100-year monitoring program for mercury. And the fund is managed by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and has supported monitoring for fish, waters, and sediment since that time. In 1984, scientists expected that the mercury levels would decline over time. However, the information collected in the intervening years indicates that the levels remain stable with no clear decreases. Pursuant to the authority of the Federal Conference of Environmental Response, Compensation, and Liability Act, and pursuant to a 2005 negotiated settlement between the Sierra Club, the Natural Resources Defense Council, and DuPont, the DuPont Company has worked with state and federal agencies, academic institutions, and other concerned entities to complete a natural resources damage assessment and to propose a plan to compensate for loss or damaged resources. Under the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, DuPont is required to propose a plan to remediate the continuing deposition of mercury into the South River. Ms. Nancy Grosso and Mr. Ralph Stahl of the DuPont Corporate Remediation Group are here with us this evening and will provide the City Council an overview of DuPont's remediation proposal. DuPont believes that the continuing deposition of mercury occurs through the slow erosion of legacy mercury deposits that currently reside in riverbank soils. In broadly stated, DuPont proposes to either remove or encapsulate the contaminated soils through a series of bank management projects. Ms. Grosso will give you more detail about the specifics of those proposals. Most immediately, DuPont would like to work in, along the banks in Constitution Park. In fact, there's a strip of land that is still owned by the DuPont Company along the banks of the river in Constitution Park, and that would essentially be a pilot project for DuPont. At a future council meeting, I expect that you will be asked to provide DuPont an easement for access to that area. The city staff have reviewed DuPont's remediation proposals, and this is something we've worked on for more than a year now, and we've expressed concerns over, for several broad issues. One would be the loss of established streamside vegetation, tree canopy, and a damage to aquatic habitat. Two would be the potential diminution of recreational and aesthetic enjoyment of the river. Three would be impacts on current or future city infrastructure. And finally, the potential diminution of current or future public rights or the granting of special rights to a private entity. As I say, we've worked with DuPont over a period of time to try to address these concerns, and we will continue to do so. With that, I turn it over to Ms. Grosso.
I'm gonna, I guess I should stand over here and maybe Ralph, could you go first? I'm Nancy Grosso with the Corporate Remediation Group, DuPont, and that's Ralph Stahl, my colleague. I'm gonna talk to you, I guess, two parts. I'll go over the background of the project again, maybe a little bit more quickly in the beginning, and then also I'd like to talk about some of the specifics for Constitution Park. The next slide, Ralph. Here's some of the history that Mr. Shaw already went over. Just more recently, in 2001, DuPont and Virginia Department of Environmental Quality formed the South River Science Team. The main purpose was to understand why fish tissue concentrations of mercury were not decreasing over time as we anticipated in the 1980s and to try to figure out different ways to remediate this. And probably about 2005, all of the lines of evidence pointed pretty soundly towards the banks as an ongoing erosion of mercury-contaminated soils that were re-entering the river and keeping the fish tissue mercury elevated. We actually have done a pilot to stabilize the banks to prevent the mercury from getting into the river. It's on the opposite side of the river from Constitution Park, and so far, the results are pretty favorable. And that was done in 2009. In 2014, DuPont and Virginia Department of Environmental Quality signed a permit that requires DuPont to remediate the river, and that's under the Resource Conservation or Remedia- Remediation Act, Recovery Act. Next slide, Ralph. This slide show, is a map of the river. Down at the bottom is the DuPont plant area, former DuPont plant area, and it goes up to River Mile, what we're calling River Mile 2, so it's two linear miles of river past the wastewater treatment plant. And what it shows in yellow are those banks that we believe are contributing significantly, significant amounts of mercury to the river. And these are the banks which we would propose in the future for remediation. And down at the bottom around River Mile Point 2 is sort of a pink area with a little bit of red in it. That's Constitution Park, and that would be the first phase of work that we're proposing in the river. Next slide, Ralph. By the way, that's about 25% of the linear river miles and the first two miles of the river. Here's a close-up of Constitution Park, and the figure shows the South River and Constitution Park. It's, the work area is outlined in yellow, the dotted line. The actual banks that will be remediated is outlined in that green, light green color. And a subset of those banks that we're remediating will actually involve removal of soils. And so essentially, there's two different designs that we're proposing. One is removal and restoration of the bank, and the second one is actually a cover preserving most of the trees, the larger trees, the healthy trees along the river, and some revegetation. So I'll show two schematics of the removal, proposed removal, and then the capping area. So the next slide shows, this is what it would look like for the removal. The original bank is essentially what's shown there. We would remove the soil down to that red line, replace it with a charcoal layer which absorbs mercury. It's an extra protection layer. We'd then build up the base of the bank with a rock toe similar to what you see in rock ledges along the river. We'd backfill it to grade on a gentler slope and then put topsoil and revegetate it. And the vegetation would involve, you know, native shrubs and trees. And at the base of the bank, you see that kind of brown root-looking thing. That would be, those are rootwoods that we'd place in the river to compensate for fish habitat, essentially creating some slowed velocities of the river where fish could hang out. Next slide is what we propose to do over most of the bank, and that is to simply do some grubbing, remove some of the smaller shrubs, keep the existing trees that are healthy and substantial in size, and place something we call GeoCell around the base of the trees, fill that with biochar and fill material, and then put a layer of topsoil and revegetate. So that's kind of the encapsulation design that we're proposing. That will require, well, both banks will require maintenance over several years until the vegetation is well-established and essentially holds the bank together. And so we would be maintaining it to make sure that the vegetation takes hold. Okay, next slide, Ralph. Okay, so at Constitution Park, this is kind of a blow-up of the work area. The South River's on the bottom part of the slide here. We'll be enclosing the whole area with a safety fence. They'll be, in the area where we're doing removal, we'll actually have a coffer dam in the river to prevent any soil from getting into the river and flowing downstream. And it's kind of a tight area for working, so what we'll be doing is having some lay-down areas, but we will be trucking material in from other areas. We won't be staging all of the material in this area. And the next slide, I think, shows the truck route for that. That's the light blue line on here. You see, there's Constitution Park in green. The light blue line shows the truck route from the DuPont property on Delphine Avenue, where we'll be staging a lot of the material, like the back fill and the topsoil, and trucking that across, up Delphine Avenue, across the Second Street Bridge, and down Arch Street to Short Street, where we'll access the remediation site. And this, we're hoping to, if we get the access agreement this year, we're hoping to get this done this year from October through December. We might get it done even more quickly if the weather cooperates. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Grosso. Is any questions from City Council members?
Question?
Go ahead.
The proposed work you're gonna do, will it widen or deepen the river?
No, we're not actually, we're gonna be working right at the water level. We really won't be working in the stream bed. It's more or less the base of the bank and then the bank, the soft soil part of the bank.
Okay. And so none of this would affect the temperature of the river as well? I know we hope some day have showy-sized trout in our water, and this wouldn't affect that?
It probably won't. It's a relatively short reach. At first, we, you know, in the place where we excavate, we will be taking out the ground cover. That'll take some time to grow back. But for the rest of the reach where there's mature trees, we'll be leaving those trees in place, and that should, you know, continue to help the temperature of the river.
Thank you. Just have a question about the GeoCells. And are they penetrable by natural vegetation over time?
Yes, they are. They're actually open, they're kind of like an egg carton without a bottom.
Oh, okay, I've seen this.
And so you put whatever fill you want, and we're doing a mixture of soil and biochar or charcoal together, and then over that we'll have topsoil.
And so that topsoil would come from the site that was recently graded out on Delphine, correct?
The topsoil will be obtained commercially. I don't think, I don't think that the quality of the soil at Delphine Avenue is topsoil grade.
Okay. So, but it would be part of the mix?
It would be part of the mix, yeah. The final mix will have, will have six to 12 inches of topsoil for the vegetation.
Any other question? Mr. Martin?
Is there any thought about, heaven forbid, floods? What might, how this might impact or affect what you're trying to accomplish?
Well, we're, there's been hydraulic modeling done for two reasons. One is, you know, in order to get the permits from the Army Corps, we can't raise the flood level of the river. And so we've done the modeling to show that we're not having a net increase in flood level. The other thing is the shear stresses on the, on the design, and as part of that design, you know, we're working in the stability that you need to withstand shear stress, the maximum shear stresses we expect along the river. And we've done this at the pilot across the, across the way. So far, we've had a 10-year flood, which probably had the highest shear stresses, and the pilot withstood those stresses.
Any other question?
Just a follow-up to popcorn on that, is that are there examples of this sort of remediation, mitigation in other parts of the country that, and in terms of how those could, that could be presented so that we can understand the context of the proposal?
There are other bank stabilization projects. There are quite a few in the Midwest. So far, they've been successful. We're kind of doing this in a phased way so we can demonstrate the stability of the bank stabilization as we move downstream. I guess, you know, in terms of the engineering, it may not be identical, but it's, it's a pretty well, bank stabilization is often practiced for restoration purposes, not always for remediation purposes, but more and more we see remediation projects across the country. One example is the Kalamazoo River up in Michigan, and there's another one planned on the Housetonic in Connecticut. So it's becoming a pretty widespread approach to remediation.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning the approaches, it's more of so that folks could have an appreciation for the visual context that would be disturbed as part of the remediation.
Yeah.
Because of the ground cover, as you mentioned, you know, I'm a little concerned about that, and particularly since, you know, we've got the water trail in place now, it's certainly... It's certainly recognized as an important recreational fishing area, and so would be concerned about that.
Yeah.
So I guess the more, the more examples that you could provide, and particularly those examples where contaminants were remediated through this similar type of approach, I guess I'd be interested in seeing those examples.
Okay. I actually, I think the pilot that we've done already on the South River, we used a somewhat more aggressive design there, where we actually, you know, built up the bank. And we have a series of time pictures that we can provide that show how the bank recovered over time in terms of vegetation, and we can provide that to City Council.
Okay. Any other question? Thank you, Ms. Bruce.
Thank you.
Item 3B is to receive a presentation from Mr. Greg Hitchens, Director of Economic Development, regarding city-owned industrial properties at Exit 94 and Exit 96. Mr. Hitchens.
Mr. Mayor, will give Mr. Hitchens and the AV team a moment to set up here. Just as a matter of introduction, in January of 2012, City Council approved a strategic decision to purchase 170 acres of land off of Delphine Avenue near the I-64, Exit 96, for the purpose of creating an industrial park. We've referred to the area as Exit 96. Mr. Hitchens is going to provide an update as to where we are with the development of Exit 96, and then as well, he wants to discuss 30 acres of industrial property that the city has long held near Exit 94, adjacent to the interstate.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for your attention tonight for this brief update on our industrial parks. Tonight, I'm going to briefly talk about a rationale behind industrial parks, the importance of them, why Waynesboro has some advantages in this area, talk about, as Mr. Shaw mentioned, both Exit 94 and Exit 96, and then sum up with some marketing about both of them. Industrial parks are not a new concept. It's a proven concept. It's been around since the 1800s, where cities and municipalities and railroad barons would congregate industry in a certain area. Certainly, our industrial area started around the river and our railroad tracks along South River and in basic city. And the idea is still the same, is to congregate industry in a particular area. As industry grew over time, communities did not want industry in their downtown area, so they pushed them out to the outskirts of the city to create industrial parks. Industrial parks are still the place where concentrated services are. So you have power, gas, utilities, rail, transportation access, and so forth. That's one of the backbones of what makes an industrial park. And it also, having those concentrated utilities and infrastructure reduces time to market, and that's becoming more and more important as we move into the year 2000. There are any number of examples of successful industrial parks. We do not have to go very far. What we're calling Exit 94 in the late 1980s was farmland, and at that point, the city acquired roughly 111 acres. Today, that 111 acres represents over 500 jobs, and in the last 15 years, $13.6 million of tax revenue to the city. I would say it's a successful industrial park for the city. A backbone of that was a shell building. The city built a 75,000-square-foot shell building and marketed it around the world, received a number of site visits, but ended up being home to Poly Barn, Poly Bond, excuse me, who in 1992 was considering moving out of the city because they could not expand in their, in their location. Having the shell building ready for them to move into with minor modifications has now become PGI and Berry Plastics, one of the city's largest employers. Timmins is a well-respected engineering group who does work around the state and around the country. They use a five-tiered system to measure the readiness of industrial parks. We could do a whole presentation on what those five tiers mean, but our Exit 94 and our Exit 96 industrial parks are both a Tier 3. And in terms of product development, that's right in the middle. It's the least expensive tier you can be into and be in the game. Our goal is to be in a Tier 4 and 5. Again, we can go into a lot of detail on this, but we're at a Tier 3. We want to go into Tier 4 and get into Tier 5, where our probability of success is greater than 90%, according to Timmins Engineering. The time to market, once we have those steps done, is nine to 15 months, which is well within company, what companies are looking for. Waynesboro has a number of advantages. According to industry surveys, non-workforce-related factors in where a company will locate a facility are highway accessibility, proximity to markets, available land, cost of occupancy, and cost of building. Waynesboro ranks very high in all those areas. Rail is a very, another important, very consideration that we'll talk about in a moment. First, Exit 94. As I mentioned before, it's a 111-acre site. Currently, there are roughly 30 acres available between the existing buildings and Interstate 64. City has an easement to build an access road on the western side, but at the moment, we have no way of getting to the eastern side of this property. We're also taking steps to be phase-ready in this, and we're removing some old farm buildings through CDBG funds on the western side of our property. Where are we today? Not counting the investment made in the 1980s and 90s, we recently spent $4,000 to update the Phase 1 environmental. Our next steps are to design and construct an eastern entrance road. We have an estimate for that. The engineering and a master plan will be roughly $40,000, and construction $1 to $1.5 million. Engineering will take about 20 weeks. Construction would have to be concurrent with VDOT's building of our connector road, which I'll touch on again in a moment. Exit 96. In January 2012, City Council approved a strategic decision to purchase 170 acres off of Delphine for the purpose of creating the next industrial park for the city. Since acquiring that land, the city has initiated a number of projects to prepare the site for development, including master plan, as you might see here. We have five different options for how a master plan might look. This happens to be the two-large industrial version. The most recent development was the receipt of a smart scale, formerly HB2, funding to complete the interior access road and connect with Exit 94. The site's 170 acres, bisected by the Norfolk Southern Rail Line, so essentially, we have a 65-acre site and 105-acre site. We've done the preliminary engineering, including extensive geo-tech and examination of karst that's in the area. We know exactly where that is and how to build on it for the future, and as I mentioned, the master plan. To date, and Exit 96 is well situated for all those factors I mentioned before. To date, the acquisition of the land, the fees, and the pre-purchase studies have totaled $3.5 million. Pre-development planning, $135,000, and the smart scale contribution to date of $150,000. Our next step, utility design and construction, coordination of all of our efforts with the smart scale construction, temporary gravel entrance road, and rezoning portion of the site to heavy industrial. One part of it is already a heavy industrial, the other part is light industrial. The investment to accomplish those things, the utility design is roughly $400,000, and construction $5.1 million. The connector road, as you know, is a $16 million project, of which the city is contributing $2 million. The gravel entrance road is $13,000, and of course, rezoning is zero. Water and sewer design will take six to nine months. The construction will be concurrent with the road. And based on our most recent conversations with VDOT authorities, the connector road engineering will take three years and construction two years after that initial three-year engineering. Just a word on that scheduling. You may remember, when we purchased the land, we discussed a five-year development schedule. So from 2012 to 2017, we were hoping to have an interior road built with the water and sewer well on its way. We were on track to do that, for road construction to be done in late 2017, early 2018, at a cost of $5 million, which would have provided us industrial park access. As you know, the smart scale opportunity became available to give us a $16 million road from Delphine all the way to Shenandoah Village Drive at Exit 94. So the approximate 1.5-mile road will cost the city $2 million, provide industrial park access, the safety issues around that intersection at the target, and reduce congestion, again, to be completed in 2022. That's the current layout of how this would look. Again, connecting Shenandoah Village Drive with Delphine, providing the interior access to the Exit 96 industrial park. Marketing, both sites are currently listed in local, regional, and state and national databases for opportunities. We've had several site visits for both parks. People are very impressed with our area, with the sites, with the industrial parks, but the general consensus is, nice site, call me when you're done. And that's what we're trying to do today. The last piece I'd like to talk about is brand identity. Exit 94 and Exit 96 mean something to us. We know what that means. We know where they are. It means absolutely nothing to the outside world. We're proposing to start September 1st to rebrand both of the industrial parks. Exit 94 was originally called the Waynesboro Commercial and Industrial Park. We're proposing to go back to that, a variation of that, the Waynesboro Commercial and Industry Park, and a brand-new name for Exit 96, Nature's Crossing Technology Center. It's a combination of our nature that we're known for here in the Shenandoah Valley. The center and the crossing indicates the transportation access, and technology indicates the type of manufacturing business that we want to attract for the area. In September, we plan on introducing this with a media release, update all of our listings and databases, and install road signs that look something like this at both industrial parks. For future marketing, based on future funding, as the sites become more, more ready, become more developable, plan on doing virtual tours, additional media exposure, and trade and industry events. If I may sum up tonight with a retail store analogy, let's assume for a moment that we own a store called Main Street Store. As the name might indicate, here in the city of Waynesboro, we have good proximity to markets. We have a good proximity to the other citizens of Waynesboro, to the surrounding counties and cities. If we're on Main Street, we have good highway accessibility, but no one knows what kind of store we are, because it's not very identified very well. We're a Main Street store. But let's say we sell shoes. We have a whole rack full of size 6 shoes, not the most popular shoe size in the world, but we have a lot of them. So we have product on the shelf, we have product in the store, but we need to get more products. So we have a short-term solution to buy more product, and we have a long-term solution to buy more product. And we need to change our name to maybe be the Main Street Shoe Store, so people have an idea of what it is we're trying to sell. Our both, our city industrial parks are in close proximity to major markets. We're in one-day truck distance to Jacksonville, Boston, Indianapolis, Memphis. We can reach the east coast and most of the Midwest in one-day truck traffic. We're at the crossroads of two interstates to help facilitate that proximity to markets. According to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, mid-size rail sites, 25- to 50-acre rail sites, are in high demand. In fact, there's only six of them in the mid-Atlantic region today. When we are finished with this, we will have an opportunity to have two rail-served sites at Exit 96. I've already talked about our lack of finished product. Yes, we have a number of buildings and sites that we market on a regular basis, and have had some success with those. But they're old buildings, and they're greenfields that are prepared for retail and commercial use, not necessarily industrial use. We need to prepare industrial use to prepare ourselves for the future. We have a two-year plan to build that access road at Exit 94, and a five-year plan to build the road at Exit 96. And of course, I already mentioned, changing the name to Waynesboro Commercial and Industrial Park for Exit 94, and Nature's Crossing Technology Center for Exit 96. So we might better demonstrate to the world what we actually do and what the parks are for. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Mr. Hitchens? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other actions needed for that tonight. Item 4A is to receive a presentation from Deputy City Manager Jim Shaw and consider adopting a resolution regarding a fund balance policy. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, some years ago, I taught a statistics class in the Public Administration Program over at JMU. And when I started, I realized it was a requirement of the curriculum there. But over a period of semesters, I came to realize that nobody ever took it as an elective. Not one person volunteered for that experience. And so I realized that maybe this isn't the topic that people want to sit and spend their evening listening to, but I'll try to make it relevant and as interesting as I can. There was someone, probably an over-exuberant accountant, said that fund balance is the cornerstone of financial flexibility. So what I'm going to try to do tonight is talk a little bit about what we mean by fund balance. What is our recent experience here in Waynesboro with fund balance? And then finally, why do we have, why are we proposing to have a fund balance policy? And how have we come to formulate this policy? Cities and a lot of nonprofits do their accounting about what is known as fund accounting, and it's basically a system that emphasizes accountability rather than profitability. And that is, in the system, a fund is a self-balancing set of accounts that are segregated for specific purposes in accordance with laws and regulations or other special restrictions and limitations. And government agencies have special requirements to show in their financial statements and report exactly how money is spent, rather than how much profit was earned. And unlike profit-oriented businesses, which use a single set of self-balancing accounts or a general ledger, or like your checkbook at home, we use a ledger that segregates our funds into these, our accounts into these various funds, so that there can be detailed reports of expenditures and revenues for the organization's individual funds, and then a summary across the entire organization. And some of you are familiar with this, some of this language, that we basically have three types of funds at the city of Waynesboro. And I'll start from the bottom and work up. We have fiduciary funds, which basically mean they're monies that are held for other agencies. If you look in our annual financial reports, you'll see money that's held, for instance, for the Police Training Academy or for WAFAC. We have proprietary funds that are, funds that are the business-type enterprises of the city. The water fund, the sewer fund, the refuse garbage fund, and the stormwater funds are all proprietary funds. They're recorded separately, their money is managed separately, but the accounting of those funds is more like a business in the method of accounting. And then the funds that we talk about tonight are the governmental funds, and a portion of the governmental funds are, would be the general fund. And the governmental funds are everything that's not in one of the other funds, but they track what we think of as the common governmental activities, police, fire, the Parks and Recreation Department, the library, planning, zoning, basic administration of the city, certain parts of public works. And those funds are essentially paid for by the pool of taxes, license fees, permits, and so forth that the city requires. Fund balance, then, is the excess of assets over liabilities on a balance sheet, or what we might know as a surplus. We talk with the council often about the fund balance that you commit for certain purposes, and we call reserves, and that fund balance, for the most part, are available resources that can be used at the council's discretion. There are two different There are two different ways to present financial reports, and you, as a council, have seen both. One would be where we report on the flow of resources over a set period of time, and that you may recall, as we've had our finance committee meetings, and you see a quarterly report, so you can see money that's been spent, and revenues that have been collected in, over a period of time. But fund balance really reports on the stock of resources that are available at a given point in time. And so typically, we rely upon the annual report, the CAFR, to determine and report fund balance, although Mr. Pruvet certainly provides periodic updates on especially the use and the balance in committed reserves. For the general fund, and the policy that we're discussing is for the general fund, there are essentially five different types of funds. And starting from the top, there are non-spendable fund balance, which represents monies that either are not in a spendable form, such as inventory, or monies where, that are required to remain intact. For the city, the library perpetual care, or I'm sorry, cemetery perpetual care fund is a non-spendable fund. Basically, the obligation we have to folks who have purchased cemetery lots is that we will hold those funds and only spend the interest earned on those funds. Restricted funds are amounts that are constrained to specific purposes by their providers, and those would be either grant funds, that we've gotten a grant for a specific purpose, categorical aid that comes to the city from the state for, for instance, the VDOT urban maintenance money that can only be spent on roads that qualify for VDOT's urban maintenance program, categorical aid that comes for police departments, or for constitutional officers' offices. Then we have a group of funds that collectively constitute the unrestricted funds, the committed funds, which are the reserves that the city council has designated to set aside monies for specific purposes. For instance, the city council started several years ago setting aside money for the replacement of the city's central computer system, the Enterprise Resource System. You've set aside money for maintenance of equipment, replacement of equipment, maintenance of buildings. You've set aside money in the past, for instance, for school maintenance. And so you have a set of committed reserves. Assigned fund balance are amounts that the government intends to use for a specific purpose, and that intent is generally expressed through the budgeting process, and then ultimately through purchase orders or contracts that the professional administrative staff enters into. And then finally, there's unassigned fund balance, and that's an amount of money that has really, has not been assigned for any particular purpose, but it is reported, and it forms really the basis of the operating capital or cash of the city. And as I say, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance, all are combined to describe what are called unrestricted funds. In the period between fiscal year 2010 and fiscal year 2015, fund balance grew from a little more than $10 million in fiscal year 2010 to more than $15 million in fiscal year 2015. And you can see essentially what's going on here. The blue bar represents the revenues of the city, the red bar represents the expenditures of the city, and the yellow bar represents fund balance. Now, I will tell you these, one other thing about Mr. Shaw is that he's colorblind, and so these charts test my ability to describe colors. So I'll point to them, and if you have any misunderstanding, we can clarify that. The greatest increase, single increase in fund balance occurred in fiscal year 2012, and a bulk of that increase, about a $4 million increase, more than half of it, was attributable to the collection of a past due tax and interest, more than $2 million, about $2.4 million. And then, as well, there was a particularly large rollover of restricted VDOT funds in that fiscal year. In the period that's shown here, fund balance has increased four of the six years that We utilize fund balance every year as part of the budgeting process, and most often, you'll see that non-recurring expenditures that come through the city department's budget proposals are paid for out of fund balance. On average, we use a little more than $1 million of fund balance to balance the general fund budget each year. And it's an important thing in that, according to the Government Finance Officers Association, a budget is balanced when revenues and expenditures are equal, or where revenues and the use of fund balance for non-recurring expenditures is equal to expenditures. So if you were funding, for instance, salaries with fund balance, that would not be considered a balanced budget by the GFOA, because you're not generating revenue necessary to sustain that expenditure into the next year. And again, it's, this is an important principle to think about, is that that $1 million that essentially is coming from the city's fund balance or savings would constitute, on a tax rate in any particular year, and this varies year to year, anywhere from a nickel to seven cents on our tax rate. And so, the use of fund balance helps us to smooth the budgeting process, and especially the revenue generation process. And some of the key things that we have used fund balance for, and I would say most of these the GFOA would consider to be legitimate uses of fund balance, the yellow portions of the bars, each of these is a fiscal year, the total use of fund balance, but the yellow are purchases of equipment. That's everything from police cars to dump trucks to lawn mowers and parks and rec, anything that has a durable lifespan. That we've used fund balance as well in cases for facility maintenance, fixing up the building at Rosenwald, for instance. We've used fund balance in recent years for, this large one is basically a portion of the tax settlement that we held and then paid to the schools once the settlement had gone through a legal process. We've used fund balance to fund stormwater capital improvements in the past, and the future of those capital improvements will be funded through the stormwater program. One year, we used fund balance for a one-time employee bonus. We've used fund balance in one year for DSS funding. 2015, we had a dramatic increase in Department of Social Services funding, and our hope was that it was a one-time increase. And I think it begs the question of whether it was really a legitimate use of fund balance according to an accountant's standard. Unfortunately, what we found is we were wrong, and the DSS funding did not go back down, and in fact, it's increased in subsequent years and has been funded. Those increases were funded from general operating budget. So why have a fund balance policy? I was asked really to try to give a simple analogy for this environment that we work in, and I try to relate it to a home, the way a household might operate its own budget. I'll apologize to any accountants that are out there, because it's an illusion that we allow, but it's not strictly the case, because, again, we don't do cash accounting. But the analogy would be that in a household, you might have a checking account, a savings account, and a credit card. And so, what you would hope to do would be to pay for your every month expenditures, your rent or mortgage, your car payment, groceries, utilities, out of your checking account. And then you would hope to have a savings account for those kind of one-time or periodic things that come up. You have to replace a hot water heater or your roof, or the car breaks down, and so you have some savings for sort of that one-time emergency. And then, you try to use your savings account, so you don't have to put those things on a credit card, because the money costs, or the credit card will cost you interest in, on your money. So that's a simple way of thinking about, why are you concerned about having fund balance? And it's basically for a number of purposes. One would be to provide sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs, and that is that a portion of fund balance is being used every day to pay vendors, and to make payroll, and those kinds of things. Another thing is that it secures and maintains an investment-grade bond rating, that rating companies look to whether or not we have a fund balance policy, and then as well, how we manage our fund balance when they consider our bond rating and our creditworthiness. Another reason that you have fund balance, is much like that household, is to offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfalls, and then also to provide funds for unforeseen expenditures related to emergencies. And the staff you have in place now has experienced all of those things, that in fiscal year 2009, as the recession hit the valley, we saw a dramatic downturn in our sales and meals tax, and in fact, we had to do more than a half a million dollar budget adjustment mid-year, that is, cut expenditures mid-year to address that problem. You'll see tonight on your agenda, there's an appropriation request for the repair of some devices, some gas, methane gas remediation devices at our landfill, that wasn't foreseen at the time we went through the budget process. So the GOFA, that is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that governments establish a formal policy on the level of restricted fund balance that should be maintained in the general fund. And the considerations in devising such a policy would be, one, what is an appropriate use of fund balance? Two, what's an adequate level of fund balance? And then finally, what is your plan to replenish fund balance? And the things that are to be considered, and really, the fund balance policy that the staff has proposed to you, is very much mirrors the GFOA policies in most regards, but the things that you think about, one, are the size of government, that GOFA, for instance, recommends that you maintain two months' worth of expenditures in the unrestricted fund balance. We're recommending a more conservative approach, that would be 110% of two months' worth of expenditures in the unassigned fund balance. And the reason that we would do that, one, is consideration of the size of local governments, that these fund balance policies are recommended for governments from the size of Lexington to Baltimore, New York. And what you find is that larger governments have more diverse sources of revenue, more diverse expenditures, and are generally able to smooth emergencies more readily than smaller governments. It's much like an insurance company, the more policyholders you have, the more you distribute that risk. Another thing is the predictability of revenues or volatility of expenditures. And so, for instance, with the city, we have become very reliant on sales tax, meals and lodging tax, and other consumption taxes, and those are relatively volatile revenues. And especially the case of sales tax, there's always a lag in the time that sales tax is reported to us, so it makes it difficult for us to respond immediately to a problem if it's occurring. The other thing is that we know that, for instance, with our landfill, we at one time held a reserve for the landfill that was required by the Department of Environmental Quality of $1 million, in case there was some sort of very expensive problem to be resolved in the post-closure remediation program that we pursue. During the period of years in the recession, the city spent all of that $1 million, and so the $1 million liability still exists, but it's based on our fund balance, the total value of our fund balance. And so, that's a very volatile burden to carry, so to speak, on your fund balance. Not to say that we would need it immediately or ever, but it's a liability that the EQ requires us to carry over a period of almost 30 years. Another issue that we consider would be the commitments or assignments that the council makes within its fund balance. So if I go back to this slide, where we talk about the GFOA basically applying its standard to these three funds, the staff is recommending that we apply the standard for what's held in the reserve to the unassigned fund balance. It is because we basically commit these dollars to, for the most part, very much known expenditures, that the council, I think, has been thoughtful in recent years as to thinking about things that cost us money, and where we don't necessarily want to have to collect all of that money in one fiscal year, and setting aside money for those types of projects or equipment replacements and so forth. And so, in essence, we look at the committed reserves as money that we know we're going to need, and so we take that out of our equation. Now, having said that, clearly, the committed reserves are yours to expend as you see fit, and it always takes council action to commit the funds or uncommit the funds and reappropriate them to other purpose. And again, tonight, you'll see a proposal of staff to reallocate some of those funds to items that we think are going to be more immediately needed. The other elements of the fund balance policy that's proposed are simply that we would use, in an order of preference, the committed reserves first, and the unassigned fund balance next. And if our committed reserves fell below the level to be able to do that, the staff would come to you with a plan as to how to replenish reserves, both committed and unassigned. And then finally, that the, again, that there is a system, even within the budgeting process, of protecting the general fund, fund balance for non-recurrent expenditures. The council last adopted a fund balance policy in 2005, and subsequently, there were changes in the way that the GASBY rules, that is, the Government Accounting Standards Board, looks at fund balance, and so those, that policy was rendered obsolete, and so that's why we've come to you at this point in time to say that we should adopt a new policy. I think, in essence, what it is, is that we're trying to, as a group, staff and council in concert, acknowledge the importance and the use of fund balance, and having guidelines as to how we describe the use of fund balance, and then commit ourselves to that through a set of policy guidelines. And they are simply that, they're guidelines, they're not, they don't hold the same restriction as an ordinance. And the other thing that I would point out is that the policy that's before you tonight is essentially the practical policy that's been in place at the city here for several years now. This is the standard that we have applied in each of the last three fiscal years. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions? Mr. Shaw?
I've got a few. So the first question I have is, as it relates to, since we're on that slide, is if the funds are available in the unassigned category, what action would council need to take in order to release those funds to supplement the general fund? Or would council need to take an action, or could that be done, accomplished through an administrative process?
No, the council would... No, the council would have to pass an appropriation ordinance in order to release those funds for other purposes, or to assign them to a purpose is the better way to put it.
Okay. Next is, what is the current percentage of our current unassigned fund balance as it relates to the two months of expenditures?
That at the last CAFR, and what we've done in each of the last several fiscal years, is basically perform the calculation and then set the unassigned fund balance at that level. So currently, as of the last point in time that we did that, it was following the guideline as is proposed tonight. Now, fund balance is something, again, that we look at as a snapshot in time. And so I'm sure that fund balance has changed and that we're going through our year in closing now, and we'll soon enter into the audit season and we'll come to council with a new accounting of fund balance. But basically, it is as described, that the fund balance, the unassigned fund balance was set at 110% of two months. And then we were above that standard at that point in time, and so those funds were reallocated into committed reserves.
So what was that actual dollar amount?
It was something more than $7 million was what was required to be. And we, the excess was something more than $1 million, I think about $1.5 million.
So $7 million accounts for the 110%. And then what was the $1.5 million?
Well, the total unassigned at the time of the CAFR was more than $9 million. And so there were more than $7 million was the requirement for the 100%. And so about $1.5 million over that guideline.
Replaced back into the committed reserves?
And they were pushed back into committed reserves. That's correct.
So then the next one is, assuming that our current level is, well, actually, I don't have to say that because you're, so we've been doing that for three years then?
Correct.
That actually makes me pretty comfortable with it then, because my fear was that I didn't, I think, one of the questions, so folks understand this in the audience, is that we get these staff reports just a few days ago. And so it's just a lot of information, particularly for newbies, to digest. And so you try to answer, ask as many questions as you can leading up to it. But one of the things that I didn't know was what had been the policy over the past couple of years. My fear was that that unassigned category had been, was so low that the only way that we could accomplish your requested strategy of financing it and having it in place by June 30th of next year would have been to deplete funds in the already committed reserves. But that's not the case.
That's not the case, no. And as I say, now, we will recalibrate once we receive the fiscal year 2016 final numbers. And we usually have a CAFR in hand in the late fall, and then we present that to council either in December or January. So we'll recalibrate at that point in time. I'm always reluctant to, you know, to give council too firm a numbers, but all indications are, we had a good fiscal year. Revenues were, in some areas, up or at least stable. Expenditures were as we would have predicted. But as I mentioned early on, we spend about $1 million of fund balance in the operating budget for the replacement of vehicles and building maintenance and so forth. So we're projecting a loss every year. But having said that, I think we had a good fiscal year, and I don't see that we will find ourselves in a crisis. The other thing that I might add, and I had considered bringing numbers that were more specific to the council, and Mr. Brevet and I had conversations back and forth and decided that really what we would hope you would do is to realize that this is a financial policy that states principles, and that you don't want to react simply to where you stand at each moment in time, that you wanted to adopt financial policies that have durability that lead to stability over time. We prepared a policy and a resolution for your consideration, and if it's your desire to introduce and adopt the policy, that's fine. If you'd like to have more information, then we're glad to provide that as well.
So again, the last formal policy that was in place, I think we discussed, was some time ago, but staff had been able to get creative and establish a strategy and have carried off for the last three years.
Correct, correct. The council adopted a policy, I think, that last that I could find in 2005, but by fiscal, the end of fiscal year 2011, the GASB rules had changed and it made a portion of that policy really obsolete. The way these funds are described is different today than it was in 2010.
Okay, great. That answers my question.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing the fund balance policy for the general fund?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there any other discussion? Sure, Mr. Shaw would like to talk a little bit longer about it.
I'm hoping it wasn't as painful as, as anticipated.
It wasn't. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five oh. Thank you. Item 4B is to receive information regarding the city's group health insurance plan and consider adopting resolutions pertaining to the eligibility of dependents of council members and dependents of certain retirees. Ms. Nicholson.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the healthcare benefit eligibility changes. So as you are most likely aware, rising healthcare costs and the Affordable Care Act requirements continue to create an environment in which employers offering group health insurance benefits must continually examine opportunities to contain costs. The city currently participates in several cost containment activities. One of them is that we're part of the SAW consortium, which means that we partner with our neighboring municipalities to pool our resources and to gain purchasing power. So that's something we've done for a number of years. Since 2015, we went to a self-insured program versus fully insured, which has had very favorable results across the board. Something we considered for 2017 was bringing a qualified high deductible plan. This typically makes a much more affordable plan for the employer and the employee. However, we are going to decide to table that for this next year because the anticipated savings really weren't there for this time around. But it is something we're going to continue to look at for subsequent years. Okay? We are going to move forward with separating the pharmacy benefit from the medical plan. So traditionally, those two were together. And we are going to then go out and procure pharmacy services through an independent company. This just allows us to be a little bit more competitive with our pricing on our pharmaceuticals. There are two additional measures that can be taken that we would like for you to consider this evening. The first is to eliminate coverage eligibility on city health insurance plans for dependents of retirees, once those retirees become Medicare-eligible, withdraw enrollment, or are deceased. The second is to eliminate coverage eligibility on city health insurance plans for dependents of city council members. I will turn it over to Mr. Hamp for his recommendation.
Thank you, Nicole. These items are presented, or the eligibility changes are presented out of the spirit that it's my belief that they, our obligation as an employer is primarily to the employee. It relies first with the employee, and then subsequently to their service as an employee with the retiree. And in the current environment that Nicole described, where costs are increasing and our regulatory and compliance obligations are increasing, it prompts, at least me, to look at opportunities we have to manage risk in a different way and also ensure that we're pursuing regulatory compliance successfully. The timing of eligibility changes and when we communicate them and when we contemplate them is prompted in part because if there is an individual that is adversely impacted by an eligibility decision, you want that, to communicate that to the individual well in advance of an open enrollment or a plan year change. In our case, open enrollment will begin at some point in October and run through a portion of November. Those eligibility rule changes become firm and fixed on January 1st. So if, again, an individual is adversely impacted by an eligibility decision, the fair thing and the proper thing to do is to alert them to that impact in sufficient time so that they can go to the market and address the need, whatever need may exist for them. There's a secondary timing opportunity or consideration where the city council is involved regarding the recommended eligibility change for the council in that we would no longer offer coverage to dependents. And when we say dependents, we include spouses in that expression. The present council is configured as such that such a decision to adopt that policy would not adversely impact any sitting member of council at this time, which I think creates a neutral and, let's stop at the word neutral, a neutral environment for consideration of that recommendation. Concerning the retiree change, prompted by council to do some additional research, there are presently three individuals that would be adversely impacted by the recommended eligibility change. And that if council is not immediately motivated to make a decision on this particular benefit, or is concerned about tempering the impact of the recommended eligibility regarding retirees, dependents of retirees who have reached Medicare, deceased or voluntarily withdrawal, you could grandfather those individuals who were in that circumstance presently and establish the rule effective January 1st going forward. Or if council more generally wants to contemplate the recommendation, you certainly, we've presented a resolution for your consideration, but you're not under an obligation to make that decision tonight. We have probably a meeting or two before it becomes critically important to communicate eligibility changes. Jumping back to the council eligibility recommendation, it is conceivable that the council might like to consider that in context of larger compensation questions. And we could, either council could consider this recommendation tonight, make a decision, and then direct staff to evaluate subsequent changes to eligibility or compensation and bring back a recommendation. Or we can simply postpone consideration of the recommendation tonight on that matter as well.
Having said all that, some discussion from council. Anybody like to lead it off? And I think one thing with, when we talk about your spouses, we changed it with last year when, that if your spouse has insurance that's, they're eligible to get from their employer, then they're not eligible to be on our insurance plan, correct?
That's correct.
So it's...
That's for, if I could elaborate on that, just to be clear. So last year, an eligibility change was made such that for the spouses of employees, active employees, if coverage was available to the spouse, and when I say coverage, qualifying, affordable coverage under the Affordable Care Act, through an employer-sponsored group plan, that individual was no longer eligible to participate in the city's group health plan. And so they had to, they could take the coverage with their employer or buy coverage someplace else. We simply were not going to permit the employee to carry spouses who had qualifying, affordable coverage available from an employer-sponsored group.
And council would have fell under that umbrella also, correct?
In theory. I don't know that we communicated that clearly, but yes, sir.
I just assumed.
Yes, sir.
You know what happens when you assume. Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd first like to start with the employee program as it relates to, so I appreciate you, I was one of the ones that inquired as to find out how many people would be adversely affected by this, who essentially, who have served this community honorably and for an extensive amount of time. I mean, I define, you know, extensive, but many years of service as 10 or more years. And so I was curious as to how many folks might be affected because, you know, I think of my folks, and they may have been planning their, end of their career sort of financial planning and health coverage planning with anticipation that this promise, as I call it a promise, when they were hired, that they were, this was going to be made available, continued to be made available to them. And it's the pivotal question of just because we could doesn't necessarily mean that we should. And so I was curious as to the number of individuals that would be impacted. So I guess the first question would be, you said that three individuals that are under that circumstance, I guess I'd be curious as to how many, what a circumstance, how was that defined?
So if we have three individual spouses who are receiving coverage through the city's sponsored plan, whose spouse is either deceased or Medicare-eligible.
Okay. So in terms of tenure and years of service, I would imagine that would be more than three.
Excuse me?
So if there were, if there was someone, if you have over 10 years of service to the city, which I guess I'm trying to quantify that number, the number of individuals that qualify for that. And then second, when they were employed, they had an expectation that when they retired, that they would be able to allow their spouse to continue, have access to the group rate health plan through the city at their sole cost, and now may otherwise now be told that that's no longer available to them. So I guess I would be hesitant to advance the concept without having a full understanding of the number of folks that fall in that category of 10 or more years of service, that could ultimately, may have been expecting that benefit that would no longer be available to them. So I would be hesitant to support it without that information.
Okay. If I could provide a response, I think it's interesting that in doing the research, and this was an anecdotal exercise, it was not pouring through records, that the three individuals who are currently in the circumstance that would be adversely impacted have, within the five years enrolled. And so in that five-year period, we've picked up these three, one has dropped off and another one came on. So it is not a circumstance to which we see, at least in recent history, individuals availing themselves of that opportunity. I can't speak to what our employees expect or plan on. I think it's, my experience is that when you reach that point in your life, you have to revisit eligibility issues. So there may be some percentage of the employees who aren't even aware that that's a possibility. When I get to Medicare, they know they're going off and they've not contemplated whether, what happens to my spouse. So I think that would be difficult to quantify.
Right.
I think if we were, if the council as a whole were interested in tempering or mitigating, I would say either grandfather the existing folks and allow the policy to take effect on January 1st of 2017 with some comfort in knowing that it's not been, we've not had heavy enrollment in that option. If that is not sufficient comfort, I would suggest to you that we just set the idea aside until some other time. Because I don't know that it's a relatively easy thing to do, to identify a group of employees who have 10 or more years of service, but it's one more step that we have to think about and process and deal with, that it's almost, from an administrative standpoint, probably more challenged than it's worth. And I think for the benefit, if you want to tell your employees that you support them in this regard, just stand pat where you are.
Down the line.
The only question I might have is, usually if you have some kind of change like this, we have an idea of what we're trying to ultimately do. Are we trying to save money?
Yes. We are trying to save money, and we're trying to ease the regulatory burden that comes under the Affordable Care Act. Under the Affordable Care Act, our staff have to demonstrate for each enrolled member in our group plan, whether they're an active employer, retiree, for each month of the year, whether or not they were covered and whether they were eligible to be covered. And so you can imagine, that's doable. I don't want to overstate, but it becomes more difficult when you get into the retiree group as people disperse across the country. And it becomes even more difficult when you lose the connection to that individual that prompted the benefit in the first place. But we are trying to save money, and we're trying to manage a regulatory burden.
Can we speculate on what kind of money we hope to save?
Not tonight. I think we could do an examination of the history of utilization and come back with some aggregated number in terms of how those individuals utilize the benefit plan and what... some aggregated number in terms of how those individuals utilize the benefit plan and what they contribute in terms of premium.
I guess my counter to that would be, would be if I could add, is that, me, you pick folks that have 10-plus years of service, and you say, when you were hired, this may have been an expectation, we're going to honor this expectation, then all new employees, all new hires are, fall under the new category, the new policy, and employees with less than 10 years of service that the policy applied to. To me, I think that it looks towards the future of a way to strategically save, to be, to save money, but at the same time, again, I think honoring promises.
That sounds fair.
Ms. Anderson, you have any comments?
Well, I definitely support the grandfathering in for the three employees. As far as the other side of it, as far as the 10 years, I'm still on the fence about that.
Mr. Marx?
Well, I think we have two basic issues, if I understand, Mr. Hamp, the employees, and then council. And as far as the employees are concerned, I think, I would like to see if it's possible to lessen some of the impact if we can, but I think we need further information before we can reach the decision on that. As far as council members are concerned, I think we should move ahead and have staff come back with some recommendations for council. I don't see that as being a hard issue, and I think we've talked about some things that we could consider, and I think I'd like to see staff come back with, you know, something for council to consider, you know, and move ahead on that.
Thank you.
And that's, of course, I didn't speak to that, to that issue, but with regards to council, but I think that, so folks understand, the way that it works right now is that council members have access, I like to refer to as a full benefit, the benefit package, if you will, is that access to the group rate health program of the city, and then a flat compensation of a salary of about $5,100 for four members, and then of course, the mayor with, I think, $6,100 annually. And so those that don't opt into the health insurance premium, that there is, there's actually certainly a value in that offer being available, that for those that don't require health coverage, that it could be argued that there's a little bit of an inequity in terms of the full benefit package that's afforded to all council members, and such that the health insurance premiums, I understand it, could range of potentially, you know, $15,000 plus annually per member in terms of value added in addition to the monetary compensation. And so I would certainly ask staff to explore that issue and explore different options of ways that there may, we could look to future council actions, not something to particularly affect, again, those that are expecting a certain feature right now in terms of their service, but more so how we might, this council might address the perceived and real inequity of total benefits moving forward. And quite honestly, that could save taxpayers potentially a lot of money, tens of thousands of dollars every year, by adjusting compensation, making it uniform across the board, but then potentially removing the health, the health coverage entirely. So in terms of the request for this evening of the spousal report, I think, you know, again, we have that equity right now. No, no member of council is receiving that. So I certainly could support that motion tonight and ask council staff to evaluate other options.
Any other discussion as to what Mr. Short just brought up? So at that point, would we like to adopt a resolution establishing a policy that provides that the dependents of city council members are not eligible for coverage to the city group plan effective January the 1st, 2017? Would that cover what we're trying to do here?
Yes, sir.
Everybody's on board with that? All right, is there a motion to make that resolution?
I see.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. And then I think that when we talk about the other issues that we're looking at, I think we're going to table all that to staff to come back with some more information or possible wording of a resolution.
That was my sense, yes, sir.
Is that what everybody's comfortable with? All right, that's great, we can move on. That will take us over to item 5A, I think, is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of committed fund balance in the amount of $55,000 to the general fund to fund preliminary engineering and schematic design for the Sunset Park project. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen, and members of council, this is the staff's response to previous direction to return with measures necessary to establish a park and open, sort of in a soft manner, a park at the closed landfill. The appropriation ordinance would provide $55,000 for two phases of engineering work. The first phase would be a preliminary engineering and schematic design phase, and the second phase of engineering would be the development of detailed design and construction documents of the initial development of park based on the recommendations and decisions made during the preliminary engineering and schematic design phase. Your staff estimates at this time, without the benefit of engineering work accomplished, that the cost associated with preparing the landfill for what's been referred to as a soft opening would be between $400,000 and $480,000, noting that we've not yet identified a funding source to fund these initial improvements. That initial round of improvements includes upgrades to the aesthetic and practical function of the entrance, the location of the gatehouse and the Baylor facility, road and guardrail improvements, parking areas for the upper and lower areas at the site, and finally, the work necessary to protect that, those facilities related to gas remediation and mitigation and groundwater mitigation and monitoring. We would estimate that additional improvements, or a second phase of construction, if you will, which would include hiking and biking trails, sidewalks, a pavilion, a playground, restrooms, observation deck, and the conversion of the Baylor building into some sort of active and more contributing recreational function are presently estimated, again, without benefit of engineering, at about $436,000. Council obviously could select from that group of amenities and phase that, those subsequent improvements, according to your preferences and how you think they contribute or reach a goal or a vision that you've established. Additionally, I think it's important to note that the staff and the DQ have identified some drainage issues on the site that don't pertain directly to establishing a park, but ought to be attended to if the park, if we're going to develop a park at the site. And those drainage improvements are expected to cost about $1 million. So the staff presents the ordinance for your consideration, $55,000 for two phases of engineering, and that would give us information necessary to do some planning with respect to how we would fund improvements.
Are there any questions from council members?
Just to add, I've required Mr. Shaw that, of a resource that I had shared, the DCR, in partnership with the state, offers a recreational access grant that has a value of an initial grant of $250,000 for road building. Again, this is a road to help facilitate the construction of a road, $250,000, upwards of 300, an additional $100,000 to $350,000, but looking to locality to essentially pony up another $100,000 in order to facilitate that. So an entire grant of $350,000 at an expense of $100,000. Just wanted to say if that's correct.
Absolutely. And in fact, I know Mr. Jones read through the literature that you sent me, and it's been shared with Mr. McReynolds as well, and it really looks like a perfect fit for us. I think as we read it, we're not sure all of the things we're talking about would be funded through the grant, but of the $400,000 to $480,000 that Mr. Hamp mentions, for instance, about 150 of that is road and guardrail work, and so certainly, that's directly related. So I think it's a great resource, and I'm not sure how competitive it is, but we do a lot of grant writing at the city, and I think it would be a good opportunity for us.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes, I have one more question. This proposed work that we're going to do, is it pushing back the work we're going to do down Sells River, close to the construction, the shelter? I mean, we have some things, items and files, so to speak.
Right. I think the way that I look at the expenditure that the council is contemplating tonight is to give us a solid number for capital improvement plan for the Sunset Park. And the adage with any budget is that you can probably do anything you want to, but you can't do everything you want to. And so at some point in time, you've got to decide, well, what may be deferred, and I think you may be referring to plans that we've had to do improvements in Constitution Park even beyond the Greenway that's being constructed. So I think there will become a point in time when the council has to contemplate all of those options, that you are, $55,000 is a significant expenditure of the city's resources, but I think that if it's the council's desire to get a solid number for a capital improvement project at Sunset Park, it's a necessary step, and it would be a necessary step in terms of going out and applying for grants and some of those kinds of things. I don't know that that's a very direct answer to your question. I think all resources squeeze, all other resources is, you know, ultimately, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Is there a second required? This and other ordinances introduced tonight will be considered at the September 12 regular business meeting of city council. Item 5B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the governmental equipment replacement and faculty maintenance reserve in the amount of $6,518 to the general fund for the purchase of a pressure sealing device for the Yancey Building. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen, and members of council, the staff anticipates through some functional reorganization and physical relocation, the relocation of a current department that relies on this device to another building. In doing so, will be necessary to acquire a second device of this nature, so that each department that relies on it will have one available to them.
What's the purpose of a pressure sealing device?
This takes the forms that are either our bills or our checks, our vendor payment checks, assessment notices, those forms, most of which are transmitted through the mail and bends, folds them and seals them. So your tax notices, your tax bills, your utility bills, and again, various vendor checks.
So this is to be, to buy a second machine?
Yes, yes, sir.
And right now, what do we do? Do we transport them over to the...
Right now, the machine is in this building. All of the offices that rely on the device are primarily located in this building. Through a reorganization, I expect to relocate one of the offices that relies on this device to First Street, and we'll need the device in each location, First Street and the Yancey Building. It's a heavily used device.
So it's not just used like at tax time or...
Intermittently. It is just, it's used at tax time, that's a heavy and concentrated use, but for the utility billing office and the finance office, it's used, I would say, probably almost on a daily basis, if not an every other day occurrence.
So the purposes of the funds that are, to relocate to First Street, how, I guess, so how are the folks that have been using it on First Street been facilitating the job that they need to do on a regular basis?
They haven't. Right now, the utility billing office is located in this building, as is the treasurer, as is the finance department. They're the three primary users of this device. At some point, probably before the end of the calendar year, the customer service or utility billing office will be relocated to First Street, and as one of the primary users of the device, they will be left without one.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Could, I'm sorry, could, I mean, since this is relative to, related to utilities, couldn't that expenditure come out of the enterprise fund rather than the general fund?
I think the enterprise fund bought the first one, and utilities is taking that one with them, and so the general fund will get the second one.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Short? Okay. Anybody else? All right, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 5C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the governmental facility maintenance reserve in the amount of $8,000 to the general fund to fund methane remediation at the closed landfill. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you're well aware, we operate landfill gas extraction system at the city's closed landfill as part of our post-closure agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality. We're experiencing a problem with two of our wells and the hoses and other appurtenances attached to those wells, and so this would be for repairs to those wells.
It's kind of good news, considering what the cost was when we thought...
The first estimate I had was quite a bit higher than $8,000, so hopefully, this will be a fix that works.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 5D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $232,482 of the general fund committed fund balance for transfer to the self-funded health insurance fund, as well as reallocating $270,000 of the general fund committed fund balance for fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll take the first item that has to do with the self-funded insurance reserve, that as you're aware, the city, a couple of years ago, moved to a self-insured pool type of insurance, and what that means is that we basically pay a portion of an employee's premium when they go to the doctor or the hospital, and it's a portion that otherwise an insurer pays. And for moving to that system, we do take on a bigger risk, however, premiums, insurance costs for the city and the employee are, go down or remain stable. So over, when we were contemplating that move, we set aside money on two different occasions in the sum of $232,482 for the purpose of the insurance pool, and at this point in time, we're simply recommending that the council transfer those monies into the self-insured insurance pool. Take any questions anybody might have on that action.
Any questions? You want to go ahead on the second part?
The second item, as Mr. Hamp spoke to earlier, that in December of 2015, the city council passed a resolution authorizing an incentive package to the Virginia Museum of Natural History to be provided in annual installments reasonably associated with the construction of a museum satellite campus here in downtown Waynesboro. The total value of cash and in-kind services was to be $1 million, of which approximately $800,000 was expected to be cash. In the last general assembly, we did not receive funding for that project, and so at this point, we feel as if the expenditure is not imminent, and we're recommending to the council basically to move the remaining dollars from that fund to the information technology replacement reserve, that as you're well aware, we've entered into a contract with a vendor... We've entered into a contract with a vendor to replace our enterprise-wide resource planning system, and we know that those funds will be needed over the next 33 months. This does not in any way undermine our support for the Virginia Museum of Natural History Satellite. In fact, we had a conversation with Joel Kuiper, the director of the museum, prior to proposing this to council. He had no problem with it at all, very comfortable. Fortunately, his organization also does fund accounting, so he understood quite well what we were doing and told us to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any questions from council members? If not, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Item 6A is to consider appointing three candidates to the Economic Development Authority Board. Mr. Hamp.
So the council packet includes the recommendation from the Economic Development Authority. That particular board has been in the habit of working through a nominating committee and vetting candidates. The council is certainly not obligated to follow their recommendation, but they forward, the following candidates come with a recommendation from the EDA. Ms. Tammy Radeke for a four-year term ending August 31, 2020, Mr. George Reed for a four-year term ending August 31, 2020, and Mr. Chris Krupa for an unexpired four-year term ending August 31, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Is there a motion to make these three appointments?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion?
I'll just say how, how impressed I am with the number of folks that applied and the number of qualified candidates that applied for it. I am inspired and thankful for, for all those that, that took the time to apply, and to our EDA for, for giving careful consideration to, to all the applicants and, and taking the time to forward this recommendation to council.
It's a nice problem to have, because sometimes in the past, we had trouble having people step up, so it's a very good problem to have. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Item 6B is to consider appointing a council member to the Parks and Recreation for a one-year term ending June the 30th, 2017. Is there a motion to make an appointment?
I would like to recommend appointing Councilman Pete Marx to that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Item 7C is to consider appointing a council member to the boards of the Valley Program for Aging Services for a one-year term ending June the 30th, 2017. Is there a motion to appoint a council person to that board?
Again, I'd like to make a motion, we elect Mr. Marx to serve, please.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
I think there was one correction, that was 2018 rather than 2017, a two-year term.
I'm looking down the road here.
It's a two-year term, my mistake.
So that would be 2018?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Marx, for bringing that up and your willingness to serve another two years. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Item 7D is to consider appointing three members of city council to serve as the city council finance committee, each of the two-year terms expiring June the 30th, 2018. Mr. Hamp.
It's my understanding that the, to the staff's understanding, that Mr. Freeman, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Short names have been placed in nomination.
They've agreed to step up, so is there a motion to appoint those three council persons?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Thank you. Item 7 is communications correspondence and calendar.
If I could just interject real quick for a second, so we had Planning Commission was on a draft agenda. We had several, several applications for the two vacancies, and we just didn't think it was fair to, to just draw, draw names out of a hat and pick two, and to really reach out, and so I think a number of us are going to reach out to all the applicants to get to know them a little bit better and understand their, their interest in, in the commission, certainly, like the EDA, very important position here in the city, and so we're just giving it more time to do that, so if folks were interested.
That is correct. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Short. Mr. Hamp, you have anything?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Number eight, citizens' comment period.
No one has signed up to speak.
Everybody's probably spoke out tonight. Thank you.
No one wants to talk about the fund balance?
Mr. Short, be quiet. Item nine is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned.